To order the regular board meeting at the Bardstown Independent Orgasm Education.
I don't believe you have everybody in the kitchen yet.
That's my way of kidding. Please see for the place of allegiance.
Wait, you got to do this, George.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is the minutes from the regular board meeting and the special, two special board minutes on October 16th and November 8th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting and the two special meeting, state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the confirmation and approval of the claims.
Hello, everyone. The total claims for the November board meeting is $609,744.70. Of that total, Fund One is $287,569.17. That's about $82,000 different from last year. And I want to explain to you why that is. It's pretty significant. What accounts for about $76,000 of it? I don't know if you noticed in the claims, but there's payments to Fifth Third Bank. So total, it was a little over $80,000, but for Fund One, it was $76,000. In the past, when we made payments to American Express, you all didn't see that on the claims report. And it was because it was a bank draw from our account, and so you only saw the vendors. This time, we had the check actually issued from accounts payable here. So Fifth Third Bank got a hard check instead of a bank draft. And it hits a liability account, so it doesn't hit cash, but it does show up on our claims report. I think it's a good idea to have it on there so that we're able to see how much we're actually spending on our credit card, and so we can keep track of it really easily to see what our reward should be at the end of next year. But then also, we need to remember that when the newspaper report is generated, we'll need to remove that. Because all of those payments to Fifth Third will also be through all the vendors that we will see on our vendor report. So it's kind of misleading, it's duplicate, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. So we'll just need to remove that. Also in that Fund One payment for November is a $19,000 final payment for roofing at the Bardstown Primary School. That finishes out that project from last year. And then we had a replacement payroll check for Dental Care Plus. I'm not sure if you all noticed that. About $11,000. So that check was lost, and what we do is we void it on the payroll side, but then instead of having a duplicate payment there, we issue it on the AP side. So it shows up there in your disbursements. And then another part of the difference is last year, at this time, we paid Tennis Technology for resurfacing the tennis court. So that was about a $17,000 difference. So that's offsetting that. Did you all have any questions about the claims?
Do you have a motion for approval of claims?
Still moved.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval and confirmation of the claims, state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the financial report.
For a recap of the financial report for October ending, our verified cash balance So you see that in Fund One account there, it's $6.9 million. That references the tax income that we've seen over the course of the last month from when our billing went out October 1st. And I wanted to give you all an update for our tax revenue. Through February, or through last Friday, rather, we've collected 85% of the real intangible property bills that we issued in the regular mailing. So that's nearly $7.4 million of that 8.4 that was issued. The bulk of those payments were made by a third party on behalf of those property owners, mortgage companies who issue payment from those escrow reserve accounts. It's really good that those companies take advantage of that 2% discount for their customers, but then also it helps our district establish a good cash flow at the beginning of the year. The other billing is issued through manual bills, and we haven't received a certification from the Department of Revenue for the distilled spirits that's housed in our district. Typically, we see those in December or January. So once we get those, we'll mail the billing out. But overall, we're off to a really good start for this year. It's very comparable to what we've done in previous years. And then last week, you may have heard or saw on the news, the renderings and the discussion about the new Kentucky Al Park that's going to be out on John Rowland Boulevard and the old quarry site. Just to jog your memory about the relationship to our school district, at last November's meeting, I shared that when we reviewed the plans in our district map, that there's five parcels out of the eight parcels of land out there that are in our tax district. At this point, we're not exactly sure to what degree that site will directly affect our school district tax revenue. But it's an incredible bourbon destination that's anticipated to be very positive, not only for our district, but overall in our community. So we'll give you all any updates as we have. And that's all I have.
Did you say five out of eight?
Yes, ma'am. Part of it lies with the Nelson County School District. And it's really interesting, when you look at the initial plan, there's about 20 warehouses. Half of them are proposed to be in Nelson County School District, the other half in our, so it's actually very fair when you look at it that way. And then part of the bottling house and the train depot, looks like it's going to be on our side also. All the news that I have.
You're very welcome. Next item is the fiscal year 2018 audit report.
Invite Jason Strange up to the podium so he can provide that report for us.
Jason Strange, Stiles Carter Associates and Personal Management. For heaven's sake, Stiles Carter, I perform your all's fiscal year audit. With that, I think you all have gotten a copy of the audited financial statements. So we're just going to jump right in here. On page one, this is the beginning of our report on your financial statements. And it lays out what we're reporting on your responsibilities, our management responsibilities, financial statements and our responsibilities. And then on page two, you'll see a heading there, "In Our Opinion." And that's where we state, "In our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles," which is an unmodified, clean opinion, if you will. No modifications to our opinion over your financial statements. With that, we'll direct you to page 12. This is your first financial statement in the report. It's the statement of net position. You'll see the total column on the far right. See, total assets of $29.2 million and deferred inflows of $4.8 million, offset with liabilities of $40.6 million. And deferred inflows of $1.2 million for a total net deficit of $10.7 million. Now, the reason, the result of that deficit has to do with, I believe you're familiar with, a few years ago, the pension liability that you all had to pick up. But this year, something else is new, you had to pick up what's considered an OPEB liability, which is Other Post-Employment Benefit Obligations. So those would be like your health insurance and your life insurance for retired teachers and SIRS, people under the county employee retirement system as well. So if you look under the non-current liabilities in the total column there, you'll see net OPEB liability for SIRS of $3.5 million, net OPEB liability for teacher retirement of $7.8 million, and then you've got that net pension liability of $10.1 million. Those are what are taking the total district-wide financial picture to a deficit.
Where'd that come from? I can ask.
That's actuarially determined at the state level.
State level, so the state government's telling us we got to owe this.
Well, the state had an actuary report for the entire plan.
Of the whole state?
Well, for the teacher retirement plan and then for the county employee retirement plan, because you're honored in both systems. So part of that's pension, so you get a liability for the pension part, and another part of that is other post-employment benefits for medical insurance, life insurance for retirees.
That's unfunded.
That's the unfunded part. And what they do is, based on your contributions to those plans, they look at everybody that contributes to those plans in the state. And say, you work out to be, whatever your percentage works out to be, that's the portion that gets pushed down to the district level.
Because when employee, people in the state or...
That are in that, that are in those plans, that participate in those plans.
That percentage is based on student population or...
On contributions. So they look at total contributions to the plan for the year. So each year, there's an adjustment for your proportionate change in that share based on your contributions.
So the more we contribute, the more we're liable for?
Yeah, because technically, you've got more folks under the plan if you're contributing more.
So you have more pay, more costs.
That's how they have decided to allocate that out.
This comes from the state or federal levels?
From the state.
State level?
Teacher retirement system and county employee retirement system. So it's similar, a few years back, they started doing this with the pension. This is the first year they started doing it. So it's still occurring with the pension, this adjustment at the end of the year. But now, it's going to occur with what's considered the OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit Obligations, because they're separate plans.
So how do we fund this?
That's a question for...
You.
I report the numbers.
Tracy's weighing them back.
Well, let me get into a little more, because this is, this net position is basically everything the district has, and this is required. So a lot of these are made up of entries that have no cash effect on the district. So what I'd like you maybe to look at next, if you look at page 14, this is where your traditional type balance sheet that you all see on a monthly basis, which shows basically just your current resources of cash receivables and the current obligations. So for the general fund, for instance, on the far left column there, $3 million in cash and receivables and current assets, and then liabilities of $176,000. So you have a fund balance, positive fund balance of $3.1 million. So with that, that's your all's fund balance picture. Now, the overall total picture, back on the statement of net position and how you fund that, that's going to be kind of long-term decisions for almost all districts and anybody that participates in these plans. Now, the TRS, I will say, for the pension, for your obligation for that, is zero, because the state's determined it's a special funding situation. So they're funding 100% of that. They're not funding for TRS 100%.
TRS means?
Teacher Retirement System.
Does that show on our books as a liability, teacher retirement system?
It does not.
So it's zero, so it doesn't...
For the pension, for the pension.
So we didn't see this, doesn't matter.
Not for the pension. Yeah, it's not on there. But for the one that came on this year, the Other Post-Employment Benefit, a portion of that, they are not picking up 100% of it. So a portion of that's picked up by the district.
Is that the $10 million over here?
That is the seven, I believe.
$7 million?
Yes, that's the $7.8 million.
Right, $7.8 million, and that we just got assigned to us this year?
Yes, and then also the $3.49.
And that makes for $10 million.
So see, there's no pension liability for TRS there. You only see the pension liability for SIRS of $10.17 million.
Right, but the state just kicked all this stuff over on us all this year.
It's not really the state, it's the accounting guidance that required this to be recorded. State always reported an unfunded liability.
Oh, and it's assigned to us based on our contribution levels?
Yes.
So they just gave it to us this year based on our contribution levels? Even though it's always been there?
Well, for OPEB, yes, that's fair. I mean, I'm just trying to say that's a fair statement, but yeah, I would say that accurately, it's based on your contribution levels.
Well, isn't that fun?
I think, same with the pensions, you know, a few years ago when they did this, it's to just shine more light, because they've always been reported, it's just at the plan level, at the state level, and a lot of the participants, you know, they, CRS or TRS tells you contribute X and you contribute X. Well, that's all you really know, you know, at the time, and you're funding it 100%. But at the plan level is where this unfunded liability has occurred.
I think Brenda... I actually serve two roles for you.
She might be on clarify.
I help prepare the financial statements. I'm also an elected trustee on the Kentucky Retirement System Board of Trustees. I'm elected from the CERS plan. The liabilities that are showing up on your report this year have always been there. If you go back and pull the June 30th...
I understand that. Yes, sorry not to interrupt. I do understand that it's always been there unfunded, now it just gets assigned to our bottom line. It's a change in the accounting principle that required anyone who participates in these plans to pick up a portion of those plans. And I guess the easiest...
I'm not doubting your accounting ability, I'm sure you're exactly right.
Well, I don't want you to think that the more you pay in contributions, the higher your liability is.
This is what we discussed, and that was the correct answer, I thought.
Well, here's the issue. The contribution rate for every employer in the system, in the plan, is the same. So it is based on your level of payroll and applying that contribution rate. So you're not...
We're in agreement, ma'am, we are. I understand exactly what you're saying, not to be interrupting you, but yes, the more we give, the more we pay, the more we pay, because it's a percentage of the contribution payroll.
Correct.
Okay, well, I think we're okay on that. My question was, why does it all of a sudden show up this year?
Because of the accounting changes.
Application. It's always been there, we just didn't know it.
It was in your note disclosures.
Okay, it just wasn't on the books.
It wasn't on, it wasn't on page 12. It was back on page 95.
342, yeah.
It was back in there in those spun facts, you know, in town.
This is, I'm not being critical, all of yours were. It's just, we all of a sudden see a $10 million liability on the books that wasn't there.
Seven.
Seven, yes.
What he says, they're changing the spotlight so that it's focused more so that people can clarify what is the liability.
And it's a change by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, not by the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
Where's it come, federal?
No. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board is an independent accounting and reporting standard-setting body that provides accounting and reporting standards for all state and local governments in the United States. They are independent, they are not associated with the federal government.
Then why do we use, why do they consider that?
Well, from the auditor's perspective, he just told you that he gave you an unmodified opinion. He based that unmodified opinion on whether or not those financial statements meet generally accepted accounting principles, that GAAP acronym that you'll hear us bounce back and forth. The definition of GAAP is set by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Which is the independent board that advises state and federal, local governments?
It sets the rules. Then the American Institute of CPAs in establishing auditing standards says GASB is the authoritative source when you decide whether or not they have followed GAAP.
Thank you. I want to extend the conversation.
It gets more interesting, if you'll just let me go.
I can be fellow, if there was enough, today it doesn't matter. While we're on page 14, what is deferred inflows of revenues?
That's another...
Deferred deferred inflows of resources, unavailable revenues.
Those are revenues that are outside of, when you look at the current resources available, which are financial statements for your balance sheet and your changes in your balance sheet statement, changes in your fund balance, those are items that are outside what was considered a 60-day window. So if those revenues aren't going to come in within a 60-day window, they're considered unavailable revenues. So it's just another difference between these financial statements on the current resource basis and those on the full accrual that we're talking about on page 12, that have everything.
That's your property tax, you see, boss. You'll get those eventually.
Or not. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. Thank you very much, I'm sorry, it's a hard ask, but...
No, we get a lot of pushback on this, you know, every, it was the pension a few years ago. People don't understand why this is, and now it's OPEB this year, and it's the same procedure that you're going through. It's just a different, picking up another plan, you know, that you're participating With that, on page 16, I'm just going to go briefly over the changes in the general fund. The far-left corner, or column there under general fund, $26 million were your total general fund revenues, $26.6 million total expenditures by some other financing sources of $17,000. So a total decrease in net fund balance of $490,000 for the year, going from $3.28 million down to $2.79 million for the year ended June 30th, 2018. Page 31, there's a table under note E. This shows your changes in your capital assets for the year. This one pointed out, the most significant changes were some additions to construction process for the softball field out here, and then also $1.4 million in charges for depreciation for your governmental funds. So your capital assets went from $26.5 million down to $25.6 million for the year. Page 34, your largest long-term debts were your bonds payable. They started beginning of the year with $22.2 million. Regularly scheduled principal payments approximately $1.5 million, and your ending balance for bonds due 30, 2018 was $20.7 million. And I would direct you, this is a little more information on page 58, on the TRS and CRS amounts, that now, as a result of this accounting change, you have to present this supplementary information going back for historical 10 years, although on page 58, you'll see this started in 2015. So it will continue till you have 10 years' worth of trend information that'll be presented. But you can see, the net pension liability for TRS in 2015 was $80.5 million, the district share, and it's now at $110.7 million. That is the liability that the state has said that they are funding 100%. So that does not show up on your books, just shows up as supplementary information. So there is nothing recorded on your books for that, but you can see that liability has grown that the state is picking up. Below that SIRS numbers, you can see proportionate share of that net pension liability went from $5.6 million in 2015, steadily increased each year. Fiscal year 2018, it's at $10.17 million.
And that's the share that we, that's the share that we have to fund.
That's what's recorded on your financial statements.
Yeah, that matches what's been funded. And how is that funded?
At the state, well, it's, the plan is funded at the state level.
The $10 million, that's our liability. How do we fund that? We just have to figure out a way to pay that? Over what period of time?
There's really, it's not really a traditional type liability where you have a payment schedule. I mean, it's going to change each year. I mean, theoretically, the market could, the market could gangbusters, and then all of a sudden, you've got an asset on your books.
Explain to what this $10 million means to me today, and everybody sitting here that's in the schools, the teachers, and all of us. Tell me what that means. It's not, you tell me it's not...
I tell you what it means to me, is that rates are going to go up.
Rates of what?
Rates for your, that you contribute to the plan will go up.
Based on the stock market?
No, rates, what you contribute, based on the plant value of assets and plant value of liabilities. So plant value assets, plant value liabilities. The market went crazy and...
Well, you just said the markets, what's the market mean to us?
The market that, the investments that the plan holds in the market, at the state level.
Yeah, so if they screw up and lose it all, which I think they did a few years ago, we're going to end up owing more money because of mismanagement of funds and we have no control.
Probably be a safe assumption.
Better than an attorney. Andy and I both said yes. We understand that's correct. So how do we fund this? How do we fund it? Jimmy's going, I ate ten two socks.
I already bit the bullet once.
Again, that's my question. I don't mean to be rude at all, but if we get to slop into your books and say we owe $10 million, we just say, "Don't worry about it, it'll go away," because if stock goes up, it goes great, if it goes down, now we owe more, next year we'll fix it. We can't fund it.
I mean, I think it's been, definitely last year, a lot of uncertainty, not knowing how that's going to impact. I think it's, you know, the legislators certainly carry a lot of the burden about how and what impact the school district or districts across the state would have. But the reality is, I think what Jason's saying is that, you know, if you were, and it's just on the books, it's not like we're making payments toward, if I'm saying that correctly, a payment book toward $10 million. It's that we, based on the staff that we have and retirements that we are funding.
We're not funding it. We can't make a payment against it. We can't reduce it, we're not funding it.
So, you know, I think, if I'm understanding right, this is just something that the state recognizes as, you know, Bardstown City Schools liability based on, you know, fund. Definitely needs a lot of work still.
I totally get it. This is the can that got kicked down the road. I totally get it. I mean, I get where we're going, I'm just trying to figure out this. There's no, all we can do is go along and get along, there's nothing we can do about it.
In the near term, I think the impact on your district and all districts would be an increase in SIRS contribution rates.
Where's that coming? Where's that come from?
General fund. That's for the local governments, the boards.
Well, I mean, I got an answer, I got an answer for something. That's what I was, I was looking for an answer. That says, where do we fund this from? The general fund?
I think, I think that would be at the state and general fund, yeah.
If that's, there we go. It took a little bit, but I think we got it. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, sorry.
So with that, on page 74, since you are considered a local government, we also issue audit reports on internal control of financial reporting and on your compliance of federal awards. Page 74 is just a pretty neat summary here, succinct summary of those results. On your financial statements, we had identified no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance material financial statements. And on your federal awards, we identified no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or non-compliance. So an unmodified opinion with no findings to report. Any further questions or clarification?
Thank you, Jason.
So do I have approval for the fiscal year 2018 audit report?
I'll make motion approve. I got on both sides. Guess I'm seconded.
Any further comments or discussion?
How much longer are we going to be on state business?
That's another question.
Right. Okay, so on that note, all those in favor of the approval for the fiscal year 2018 audit report, state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. And to continue, the next item is the fiscal year 2018 audited financial report and the balance sheet.
Ms. Rogers.
Sue DeWammer.
All the good stuff.
So what you have before you is the fiscal year 2018 ending annual financial report and the balance sheet. So all we need, so all the adjustments have been made, everything matches with, this is what the auditor's entries, anything our work with Miss Betty and our financial statements compiling those, everything is finished for the fiscal year 2018. And you just need your approval on those documents.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Still moved.
For a second.
Second.
All those, any further comments, discussion? All those in favor of approval of the fiscal year 2018 audited financial report and balance sheet, state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Next item is superintendent report. A little more lively.
Less lively. I know, that's a lot of information, definitely. This, what I, if you remember, in our October meeting, I started, and I will continue to share, different standards as related to the superintendent's evaluation. And I thought it would be helpful to kind of review that, just like I did last time. Today's standard is standard two, which is instructional leader... Today's standard is standard two, which is instructional leadership. So to share kind of a summary of what instructional leadership is defined as, or a summary of that, under the superintendent's evaluation, it is, it is the core business of school, superintendents, where superintendents must always be teaching and learning in a system committed to shared values and beliefs, and challenging equitable educational programs and learning experiences for all students. The moral imperative of school district leadership is to create and sustain schools where all students learn, where performance gaps are systematically eliminated over time, and where the primary goal of the adults in the system is to ensure that every child graduates from high school, college, and career-ready, and prepared for productive life in the 21st century. Effective superintendents facilitate the stewardship of learning by creating professional learning communities focused on highly engaging, relevant instruction, and improved student learning. They set specific achievement targets for schools and students, and then monitor those targets, ensuring consistent use of research-based best instructional practices in all schools and classrooms. So, this is, of course, just one of the standards, but it is a very, very important part of what we do. It is why we exist, to prepare students. So it is, it's definitely something that has a great deal of weight and value. So what I would like to do, to give you just a glimpse of the kinds of things that thus far I've been involved in, and this is just a small part, a small piece, of things I've been involved in under this particular standard. First, and this goes back to receiving your report from the state based on our K-Prep and achievement data, we have, every school has worked to identify focus groups, and I've been a part of that. That would include our primary school through high school. And each identified group of students is based on data that those schools have available to them, and these students are being very closely monitored for growth. This is something that's occurring every day. In addition, instructional support for this particular target group, we are working with the Central Kentucky Education Cooperative. They are going to be visiting each school here, actually starting next week. They're going to, they have already begun and will continue to review data, do observations, have conversations with principals, school leaders, and they will then develop a plan to offer some targeted support. Again, that research-based instructional practice that we are bound to provide is something that they will do, that'll be something they'll help us with. In addition, transition readiness has been a really focus, and we continue to be very focused on that, very intentionally supporting students based on their individual goals and also on their, on their interests. So working on preparing students for college and career, and we've done that, you know, I've worked a lot with Mr. Pickett and Mr. Beck, you know, continuing to strengthen that partnership with our tech center will be an example of that. And also, of course, your decision back in July or August, I can't remember the month, when we allowed students to attend the junior ROTC, so those would be examples of that work. In addition to that, well, the last item that I'll share is our STEAM outreach. So as you know, we have the PULLAP program that happens with STEAM, where students are identified grades three through seven. In addition to that, we also have outreach going on, and there's been a lot of work done in that particular area. Again, being much more intentional, developing a schedule, and looking at what's being offered in our kindergarten through third grade. So that's, that's also work that has occurred some time ago, but something that I definitely wanted to mention under that particular standard. So, as also part of my report, I'd like to kind of add to that with some student examples. So definitely empowering students and encouraging them to learn very relevant information, things that are going to carry with them and stay with them, you know, well, well after they leave us, and it's our responsibility to provide those kinds of opportunities. So first, I have Barstown High School's Teacher Cadet Program, and I'll let Mr. Pickett kind of share a little bit about that.
Good morning, good evening. I bring to you today two great students in taking part in what we refer to as our Teacher Cadet Academy Program. And it means a lot to me. I think back to my first year as assistant principal back in 2007, one of the first things that was brought to my desk was to assist and coordinate a teacher cadet kind of program to kind of grow our own students, maybe to return to the high school. Today, we have about eight staff members in my building that are actually Barstown City School alumnus, which is amazing. I wanted to bring, bring out that Coach Rowan Williams, we all know Coach Row, longtime staff member, he was the one that initiated this. I sought him out, and until this day, he's continued working with a special group of students that are finding out the ins and outs of education, and whether or not teaching is for them, you know, whichever, whichever, which way that goes, that's a good thing. So I'm going to turn it over to Jordan Boggs and Alyssa Craig, let you hear a little about the history, and then I also want to follow it up a little bit about where this can take us possibly in the future. Ladies.
Okay, so the Teacher Cadet Program was established in the fall of 2007 with eight students in inaugural program. Teacher academy advisor, Mr. Rowan Williams, also known as Coach Row, is our, I guess, teacher, as you per say. And our motto is, "A good teacher is a candle, it consumes itself to light the way for others." And the purpose of the Teacher Cadet Academy is to encourage high school students who possess exemplary interpersonal and leadership skills to consider the teaching profession. To, cadet education provides an introduction for students interested in pursuing education as a career, however, there is no requirement to become a teacher. The cadet program enables high school students to learn teaching skills and get a feel for teaching. How we prepare for this is by introducing the basic educational philosophy, law codes of ethics, diversity in classroom management. We are writing a philosophy paper right now that's due, I think, December 5th, and we are going to create a lesson plan that we present to them of what we care deeply about. And then we are currently going to tour the University of Kentucky in the following month, and we toured U of L last month, and they taught us about their campus and their teaching programs.
Who was your name?
Alyssa Craig.
Some activities that we do yearly, we mentor other students, and then during the Christmas season, we go to the primary and elementary and we read Christmas stories. And then in February, we do a PowerPoint presentation for Black History Month. And I also have a list of some former cadets who are teachers or currently in the teacher education program. We have Haley Marks, Isaac Kroom, Katie Jordan, Sarah Khalifa, Tavon Johnson, Rebecca Filiatru, Jasmine Kimberlin, Amanda Skaggs, and we also have our current Spanish teacher, Ms. Beams. And while we was talking to Ms. Beams, she said the Teacher Cadet Program really helped her to understand fully what teaching was and what it entailed before she began to pursue the career in college. She felt it gave her a leg up on her peers because she knew what to expect through the program. I also have a statement from Senior Jack Downs, he cannot be here with us today. He said, "Teacher cadet has taught me the importance of teaching on a level I didn't expect. I came into Teacher Cadet not realizing the other side of teaching, such as lesson plans, the hardships teachers face, and the many philosophies of education. After discovering the importance of education and the dedication teachers have for their profession, I now appreciate even more how hard our teachers work every day. Through developing our own lesson plans and teaching my students in the Barstown Elementary Strings class, I came to appreciate the love of teaching. Seeing my students prosper was a feeling I came to love and enjoy through my time in the Teacher Cadet. Now I am continuing being a teacher assistant to Ms. Land in the Strings class again and teaching 7th grade, and I could not love it more. Teacher cadet taught me valuable lessons that I plan to take with me, not only if I decide to become a teacher, but through my experiences in life."
Like I said, this is something that I'm very excited about, and I hate that Coach Row could not be here today. His wife has undergone some recent surgery and he's tending to her today, but in talking with him, in a time of where principals are pursuing applicants to fill positions and things, I think we've been very proactive in the last several years, and the, some of these names that they mentioned that have went through the program, they come back to our events, they talk with us. And just like Ms. Beam that we, we actually hired from another district, she was waiting for an opportunity in a Spanish position. So I got, I have a great feeling that these, these individuals are looking to come back to service our students because they enjoyed the time here so much. Moving forward, I think maybe in the next month or two, Dr. Clark may put in front of you something that's going to complement this program, taking a look at a memorandum of agreement possibly with the University of Lowell. We're looking to add three dual credit courses to a menu of already 30-plus dual credit offerings. We have three teacher education courses, so that a junior or senior can take these three courses leaving high school to get a leg up on a teacher education program in their future. It'll be staffed by certified staffed individual that we already have, but that right there really, guess who just walked in? Coach Row. Come on up here, Coach. I'm really excited about that opportunity, because that, that really is putting these students in a position to go into a workforce and a career that they love. Coach, are there two young ladies here? You want to speak on the-
Did you already? Okay. They, they said it all. They worked on it, so we're excited about trying this next year, so.
So Coach Row, when you started this program, what was your vision?
To try and interest our students in becoming teachers, a profession that I just really love. And all of you have the same love for it as well. That's why, if you're not a teacher, you're serving on the board.
Yeah.
You care about our kids, I care about this community, and so I'm just excited that I have kids like this to work with. Just makes it fun for me to come to work.
How many are involved in you now?
I only have nine this year, but that, that number fluctuates. Last year, I think I had 16, so I had a few that just decided they didn't want to do it, after they had already committed, so. Numbers go up and down. I've had as many as 24. So if this is nine, and I've got good, a good nine.
Thanks for being involved.
Thank you, Ms. Bear, thank you, Coach Row, thank you, Earls, great job.
Thank you.
To add to, you know, teaching and learning experiences that go beyond what happens in traditional classrooms, I've also invited our Y Club from the middle school here. They recently participated in the Kentucky Youth Assembly, and that is a very unique learning opportunity too, when kids learn how to open their mouths and argue and debate things, things that they're passionate about. So, Ms. Berkshire, if any students have anything to share about their experience at KYA? I think they did really well, too, at KYA.
So if you aren't familiar with the YMCA program, it is a service and leadership program that's sponsored by the Kentucky YMCA that's built on four core values, so honesty, respect, caring, and responsibility. In the last 12 years, I've attended 17 conferences, including the Kentucky Youth Assembly and the Kentucky United Nations Assembly, which we haven't done a lot at the middle school, but I know the high school is pretty heavily involved in that. In my first year at BMS, I threw some begging and some pizza bribery, maybe, I was able to get 11 8th graders to go to KYA with me, and they just kind of took a chance on it, and I, last night, those high school kids are at KYA, and they were sending me pictures of them receiving their cords that they get to wear at graduation. So my goal was to build the program, and thankfully, I have lots of support through administration, and administrator who had kids that were involved in the program, so that helped. And this year, I, I had a lot of kids who were willing to step outside of their comfort zone. I took 63, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, which was fun and interesting, much different than taking 11. But I've never taken such a large delegation, and I've never had a delegation that was as engaged and as involved in the debate as this group of kids was. The best part of my job is that I get to witness them develop their voice, and not just go on a field trip just to have a good time, which I think they do, but it's the kid who I see his wheels spinning in class, but he doesn't have the courage to speak up and say anything, or the girl whose mom is like, "I cannot believe she's doing this" because she used to cry when people would sing "Happy Birthday" to her. Get up in front of a roomful of their peers that they, and just voice their opinion on issues that are important in Kentucky. So, and then at the conference, they're not seen as middle school students, they are seen as representatives of Kentucky, and they act as senators and as representatives, and they just get to debate with students from all over the state. I think there were something like 800 students at our conference, but there's almost 8,000 kids that are involved over the course of the seven conferences. And then I'm going to let my 8th graders share their experience.
At the beginning of this year, our meetings consisted of research and discussions of current events. These discussions helped us generate a list for bills we wanted to sign into law in our state. This year, our 6th graders, Tophie C, Johnny, Lily Roberts Small, Preston Schultz, and Carson Thomas wrote a bill and speech that would mandate a homeless shelter in every county in Kentucky. As the youngest attendees at KYA, they worked together and were able to present a very engaging debate. 5th grade, 7th grade bill authors, Taylor Hutchins, Chelsea Kaseggi, and Addison Riley advocated for there to be clear definitions of animal abuse in Kentucky, which by the way was passed through the House and Senate chambers at KYA. In addition, the issue was also aired on local news stations, and there's actual legislation in the works. Because of these three students, teams across the state are now able to have informed conversations with their teachers, parents, and maybe even legislators on, on why this legislation would benefit, benefit our state.
As residents of Barstown, we chose a topic that hits close to home. With all of the tragedy our community has endured over the last five or six years, we decided to find a possible solution to the problem, state police funding. We would like to share our proposal with you now.
Barstown, Kentucky has been given the title of the most beautiful small town in America. The town we call home has always been a safe and peaceful place. In 2013, that all changed. On May 25th, 2013, 33-year-old Jason Ellis, a Barstown police officer, was removing a branch off the exit of the Bluegrass Parkway and was ambushed around 2:00 a.m. On April 21st, 2014, Kathy Netherlands, a special education teacher at Barstown Elementary School, and her daughter Samantha Netherlands, a sophomore at Barstown High School, were aggressively murdered in their own home. On July 3rd, 2015, Crystal Rogers, mother of five, went missing. On November 19th, 2016, Tommy Ballard, father of Crystal Rogers, was gunned down while hunting with his grandsons. Each of these horrific crimes are unsolved, and each of them has left a dark shadow on our community, a looming question of why haunts our small town.
One possible answer is the funding our government delegates to, the Kentucky State Police. Every year, funding is cut. With less and less funding, there are fewer officers on the roads, fewer investigators, fewer forensic specialists, the list goes on. As a result, not only are tragedies like we mentioned above going unsolved, but our state is in the middle of an opioid epidemic. Our state is falling to crime because people do not want to become police officers. The pay, benefits, and safety of the job has been diminished. We are proposing that a $4 charge be added for all vehicle registration. For example, currently, it is $21 to register a standard vehicle in Kentucky, and our proposal would generate an additional $12 million in state police funding. This would raise the current budget from 21 to 33 million.
Under the passage of this bill, state police officers will receive certain benefits, which include increased salary, more healthcare coverage, college tuition discounts for children who attend a state university, and life insurance and accidental death policies. More importantly, this funding would put more officers on the road to make our Commonwealth
Regardless of our stance on the issue, we can all agree that making Kentucky a self-welcoming place is important. It's our home. We take pride in what our state has to offer, and we should make the protection and well-being of our citizens a top priority.
And their bill was signed into KYA law, it passed, they were able to actually present in the House and the Senate chambers at the Capitol Building, and it was signed into law as well as our 7th grade, so. Did awesome.
This is an example of what can happen when you take politics out of the government. Things happen, bills get passed, people get taken care of, and it's a shame that our, I'm not getting on the podium, I'm just making a statement. politi, our, I'm not getting on the podium, I'm just making a statement.
Kids do it really well, don't they?
They do.
They do great.
Yeah.
And it's a shame that our politicians can't take an example from them and, and run with it. It's really a shame.
Thank you. Thank you for all the students that were here. I really appreciate you all, and that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you. As a side, do you know how many do we have in the DRC? Approximately ten?
Yeah.
In this first, your first year, and it's going, they're having amazing experience. And those are all juniors, sophomores? One senior, so there'll be nine preparing next year, only one will graduate this year. And that senior is a, is a leader of the group, correct, being a senior, so.
Yeah.
Somebody's going to the Texas.
Approximately a hundred.
All right, our next item is recognition of visitors, and I don't think we have any today. So then we're moving on to the focus on delivery targets, which Barstown Middle School.
All right, Ms. Taylor.
Hello. It is an honor and a privilege to be here today in the capacity as middle school principal. I have been with Barstown City Schools for eighteen years now, ten as a teacher in the classroom, seven as assistant principal at Barstown Middle School, and now as principal. I feel like I have, I kind of know where we've been and hopefully have a good vision for where we're going, and that's what I'm here to share with you today. So I start every faculty meeting just revisiting the vision and mission of Barstown Middle School. Our vision is, is exactly the district vision, building leaders through excellence, innovation, and diversity. Our mission, our mission is to encourage, empower, and equip students to become next-generation learners. That is, leadership is something that we, we emphasize, we focus on, we celebrate, and we encourage for every single student. We have long heard that not everybody is a leader, but in some way, we are all leaders through our actions and the example that we set, and we try to make sure that students understand that and accept that, that responsibility. Every morning, we, we have a...
Uh-oh, something's wrong. Please try again.
That's so funny. That is not me. So every morning, we, we recite a pledge that we call Tiger's Lead. And I either have the microphone or a student leader has the microphone or even a teacher, and we start this by saying, as a student at Barstown Middle School, we T, we, we believe in T teamwork, I integrity, G growth, E effort, R responsibility, S service, and then we say Tigers L learn, E excel, A achieve, and D discover, and we end it with Tiger's Lead. Every morning, we do that, and, and we don't only say these words, we teach these words throughout the year, in, in our homeroom groups, in our regular classroom, and in, in the morning assembly. We often have messages that reflect on all of the values that we believe in. Next slide. Just a brief look at the accountability information over the past five years. While I would like to say that accountability is not our chief focus, it is something that we have to keep, keep a close eye on and be aware of and, and use, use our progress to help, help align our direction for improvement. Reading over the course of five years and social studies over the course of the last five years has trended upward and been, been positive. Math, if you look at math there, we, we do notice, we are concerned, we, we, we understand that we have a lot of work to do. This is a statewide trend, it's not something that, that is Barstown alone, but whether or not it's a trend for the state or for our district, it is, it's something that we want to address, and we are focused on that. As Dr. Clark pointed out in his instruct, in his report, we do have professional learning communities working together. We have, we have a targeted intervention program or MTSS program, it's now called Multi-Tierred Support, Support System for Students That Struggle in Math. We are using a program called iExcel Math. It's a computer-based program that lets kids work with where they're deficient, and it individualizes the, the math instruction, and that happens not in the math class but during, during an academic plus time. It's an extra opportunity for kids to, to grow in math and reading. A program itself is not going to fix the problem. There is no magic, magic about any program, it's, it's the commitment on the part of teachers and staff and even students to buy into the program and, and to start seeing their success. And when they see success, that just ignites lots of progress. Writing is also something that is a concern here. If you look at the five, the five-year trend, we are at a, at a forty-point-six now, and that is up from sixteen-seventeen, but it is down overall for a five-year period. We are very lucky to have received a grant opportunity through the National Writing Project. It's called C3WP, which is College Career and Communities Writers Program. And we're working with the National Writing Project, only four districts in Kentucky were, received that grant opportunity, and we have teachers coming, teachers from other districts that have been trained by the National Writing Project coming into classrooms, teaching lessons, collaborating with us, and helping us kind of revamp and, and recharge our writing program. So that's something that we're very, very on top of, and this is our first year with the program, and we have, it is a three-year program, so I'm very excited to see where that takes us. Science, we had our first year of accountability in the last five years. This was actually just the, kind of like a benchmark.
Excuse me, what does that number mean, twenty-six point five?
That is the, the percentage of students that are proficient and distinguished, the percentage of students that are considered successful.
In our school district or statewide?
This, this is our number for science. Statewide was twenty-eight, so.
Are they a comparative number?
It's, and this is the first year as far as for, for science that they actually, we had a, a test last year that they scored and gave us a number, and we're going to, then we, we go from there.
Before you leave this slide, the math has gone down. Correct me if I'm wrong, are, so are we using the Singapore model or what, what, no? So I know that was once the fad, and then now there's something else. Is there a disconnect now between the parents more so than ever, like, you know, little Johnny comes home and he needs help with math, well, you know, the way I'm going to show you do it is completely counterproductive from where you're getting at school, so we've, we've changed, we've moved the target so many times now, and now the parents are disconnected. Is there any, you know, is there a way to get back to that? Probably not, but do you see that as an associative problem with their success at school?
Math standards were realigned five years ago, and actually, it kind of, it bummed everything up a year almost, as far as what kids are doing now in eighth grade that used to do, we used to do as freshmen. So some of that comes into play with some of the scores being stagnant. I do think that, you know, and I had, I faced that challenge with my own children, and they'll argue with me, "That's not how you do it," and I said, and I always tell them, "I am a teacher, I know how to do this." What I have, what I have found, and I think how we can, how we can best empower students is, is the wealth of, of good resources that are available online, and they have access to that, whether, whether or not we, we like to think they have access to that, but you can put in almost any, any problem and get a tutorial on how to do it.
Right, I get that.
If I may.
Yes.
This is very close to me, of course, for obvious reasons. What comes to mind is the growth mindset work too, when you're talking about parents and disconnect, I mean, there is, and you've probably heard a lot of people say, "I can't do math," I mean, you hear adults say that all the time, "or I struggle with math, I can't help you," if they say to a child, "I can't help you with math," or "I'm not good either in math," when they say that to their own kid. So I do think that there's been some trends where that has had a negative impact on students in the growth mindset work that's happening across the district, where kids recognize that "I just can't do it yet," or "I need to grow in that," I think that's a way that we're in our schools combating that.
My, my problem with it is nobody knows the base ten anymore, and if, like, I have employees that, if they don't have a computer for them, it ain't happening. They don't have a, I mean, I just tell them, I like to do it, you know, as a little bit of mental gymnastics, the old-school way, and, and general speaking, I come up with the right number most of the time.
Yeah.
But at least I'm, I know how to work the problem, and they have no concept of that at all. You know, they can't always have a tutorial available or a computer or a smartphone.
And you shouldn't, and you shouldn't. I mean, you shouldn't. If you can't do, if you can't add two to in your brain, in your mind, you don't need a smartphone to show you.
Anyway, that's just my own little personal...
My issue, and, and Ryan, we're on the same page a little bit, you know, my son's twelve years old, and the way he's taught to do math at school is not the way, and I can do math.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. It's just totally, he said, "Dad, that's just wrong, that's not how you do it." You know, I'm fifty-eight years old, and my son's telling me, "You don't know what you're doing." Like, you know, I got a rattled wall, so Andy's not as old as me, but Jimmy's older. But, you know, but he can do math.
Yeah.
But the whole point is we, we do have these issues at hand.
That's our call for them.
I know, but the disconnect from the parents is what Andy brought up, and, and we really have a very, very difficult time. And a tutorial's a tutorial, that's, that's fine, you can find that, but it's not, I mean, how do parents teach their kids? So how do they help them at home when they come, that's not how you do it, Dad.
It's not just helping at home, helping in life.
Life, yeah. Yeah, good call. I mean, how you do it?
Great, great conversation.
And I think that's great for DPO.
And those are conversations that happen at school for sure, too.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, we, we get, we get the lag.
The one thing we did try to discourage is, is using lack of, lack of the know-how at home or even maybe parental support, you know, we, we have to do what we can do on our side educationally.
Because you're helping with that standard, you're helping with that accountability.
Correct, correct. And I mean, it's, I have a daughter in trigonometry in college this year, and, and it's, it follow, I mean, it's there too. It's, she, she will tell me that the way she does it isn't like the teacher does it, but she gets the right answer, and she tries to, tries to help her classmates, but it's, it's, there, there has been a disconnect in how we approach it, and not as a math major, that's, I do it the way it makes sense to me, and that's probably how you do it as a parent, too.
I was in a math class, and they were doing some addition, and they had a tri, a rectangle, and lines coming down from it, and this, that, and the other. And by the time they got the third or fourth line, I had the problem solved, and I could understand it the old way, but boy, I tell you, it was, it was confusing.
And we played a lot more games, too, like cards and Yahtzee, and we just did all this math playing, and kids don't play those kinds of games anymore. Okay, so we, we do have a leadership team, and I'm going to try to keep this, I'll try to, to go a little quicker. We have a leadership team, they are self, they self-named, teachers named their group Diligent. Of course, the, the definition of diligent in the dictionary is, is hardworking and conscientious work, and it's exactly what our team Diligent is committed to. They have, it's actually an acronym for disruptive innovations and learning to instigate greater educational outcomes for now and tomorrow. So Team Diligent worked this summer, we met two days over summer, and we came up with three goals that we were going to work on this year. We blanked on the work of the leadership team from last year and the year before and set targets for, for this school year. Rather than read those to you, our focus is professional learning communities, which is my number one priority. I think teachers working together, sharing kids, is probably the most powerful practice we can have. Teachers supporting one another and working together for better kids. Leadership is another focus, and I've kind of hit on that with, with our Tigers Lead. We continue our focus on leadership. We, I, this changed from the previous year to add teacher leadership. I wanted to make sure all teachers knew that I valued them as leaders and considered them to have positive, positive impact on our environment, and we actually brainstormed a list of things that teachers could do, different clubs, different service projects, working with different groups of kids to, to accomplish things throughout the school, and, and communication. I think communication is something that you have to constantly be thinking about, and it has to be very intentional, because if you're not thinking about it and, and being very intentional, it's something that you might forget to do, and I think communication is key. If you will continue, more on, on the PLC. This is just a quote that I really like, "Unity is strength, where there's teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved." Reflecting on, on the work at the PLC, just, I want to reiterate that a group of teachers working together to, to best support, engage, and inspire shared students. In, in a high-functioning PLC, teachers support each other, they support kids, they encourage each other, they challenge each other, and they also hold each other accountable, and I think that's very, very important. I think that happens in family relationships where, where you're held accountable, it happens on sports teams, and when teachers are working together positively, it happens, it happens with our, our teaching community as well. This is just kind of a synopsis of some communication things, clear and consistent communication. I have that, that's been my focus for kids and parents, is to be very clear and very consistent in what we say. I have encouraged teachers, "If you don't understand the dress code, please ask." Don't tell a kid, "I don't understand, I can't understand it myself, make sure you understand it." We have to, we have to be clear and consistent, and, because if it changes from one room to the next, one hallway to the next, then we often lose kids, or kids find ways to wiggle around, around being held accountable. The communication with parents is the last thing there on the list. We have started a daily email, that's something that Mr. Peyton has done, that I have heard lots of positive feedback about. I think that our Facebook communication has improved greatly, we're live streaming things, what the students just shared today, that was live streamed when it happened, and it was amazing to see. I, I think I was supervising much, so I had to watch it, I had to watch it later, but you can go to our web, to Facebook right now, Barstown Middle School, and see them doing, acting that, passing their bill. And the teacher dashboard, this is something we've done for teacher communication, and it's not going to work. But it, we are asking teachers to have the teacher dashboard pulled up every day at all times on their computer, and the dashboard has a link for eminent campus, it has a link for Tiger Alerts. Tiger Alerts, every kid has an ID badge, they have a barcode, you can scan them and send positive or constructive feedback immediately to parents, they get a text from you, from the teacher that scans them. And all you have to do is have your, your camera on your phone and hover over their little barcode, and it does it that quick. It's, it's awesome. So on, on the dashboard, we have access to PLC agendas, hall passes, we, kids scan their code, when they need a class to go use the restroom, that scans their code, and it shows us they're out in the hall. This is a, a brain creation of, of Mr. Bartley, who is an eighth-grade math teacher, it's pretty awesome. Our past students are monitored through digital Google apps, so that if, we used to put color codes on doors, and now we change color on Google, and Mr. Rogers gets an instant bing if somebody's had a color change and needs to be helped in class. And so this dashboard is a really nice tool for teachers. There's also a calendar there that has everything that's going on. And in a nutshell, that is, that's what's going on at Barstown Middle School. I thank you for this opportunity, please come see us anytime, we welcome you, and if you have any questions.
The teacher dashboard, is that just at Barstown Middle?
Yes. Yeah, and it's something that we've just done this year, we actually had something deleted through tech department, they were deleting random accounts and didn't realize. So, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's not perfect yet, but I think it's something that, you know, we piloted this year, we can share it with other schools. I know that Mr. Bartley has worked on the valet parking with a, a similar Google app for the primary school. It's pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a question. Do you think the portfolios helped put more focus on writing in youth...
Do you think the portfolios helped put more focus on writing in years before?
That is a great question, and I taught, I actually taught in the day of math portfolios and language arts portfolios, and to be honest, I enjoyed them both. I think that what happened ultimately with the portfolios was, was a lot of cookie, originally, I think the concept was pretty great, but as it, as we got used to it, there were lots of cookie-cutter pieces where kids weren't using a lot of creativity, they were given a form, you fill in these blanks, and, and that's, and I don't know if, if that was one of the reasons the portfolio went away, or if it was just the time that it took to actually evaluate those. And, and how subjective, you know, we, you scored your own score, and I don't, there were lots of glitches with the system. I think our kids are writing a lot. I think that things have changed a whole lot in reading and writing with the focus on informational versus literary, and, and writing, argumentative writing is huge right now, and rather than writing stories, it's, it's teach kids how to argue, not argue appropriately. But I don't know, to answer that, I mean, I don't, I like portfolios, but I also see why that did not continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
All right, our next item is for the fiscal year 2019, the KETS First Offer of Assistance.
Alrighty, this item that you have before you is a yearly funding stream from KDE that's based on the prior year, end of year ADA. The amount that is in this first offer, typically, there's three offers throughout the year. The amount that's in this first offer is $20,000, $20,023. That's about what it is. Last year, our first and second offer were combined in January, and it was $35,000. So they're back to where they're sending the first one out in the fall. We have a choice to match it at this time, or we can escrow it for up to three years. We recently pulled our last year offers out and matched them in August, and that amount was $62,000, so the total that we have available in our KETS funding for this year is $124,000. So our recommendation is that we escrow this offer for up to three years, and we can pull it out at any time if we find that we need it for some technology upgrades or some things that we want to do, but we think right now the best decision is to escrow it.
Make a motion to agree to escrow it. Second.
All right. Is there any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the fiscal year 2019 First Offer of Assistance of $20,023, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Ms. Rogers. Next item is our travel authorization.
Of course, you have information in your board packet, but the travel authorization that you would find there is Barstown High School's speech team participating in a tournament at Western Kentucky University on the 7th of December. This is an overnight request, and they are taking regular school buses.
Do I have a motion for approval of the travel authorization?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the travel authorization, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. And next item is the leave of absence.
Also in your board packet, there's, there are two requests for Family Medical Leave Act related to illness or surgery, so again, those, that information is in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
I would ask that the dates on these terms of absentee that go past due.
Can you, can you clarify that, I'm sorry?
Oh, Mr. Shekels, for example, it's a pre-duty. Yes, this is already kind of gone.
So, yeah, so his, his request, I think, came near the board meeting, he added plenty of days to take, so it didn't hurt to pass up later.
I'm sorry, I'll second the motion.
All right. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the leave of absence, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Personnel resignation, retirement?
We had one retirement at our, it's a special education teacher at the middle school, and that person is listed in your packet.
Okay, and our next, your site-based council minutes are in your packet also for your review. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Meeting adjourned.
Hey, nice buck there, Mr. Butler.